All right. Good evening. I'd like to call the order, the regular meeting of the Neighborhood Park District Commissioners, August 24th, 6:30 PM. Stand in public. Can we get the roll call please?
President Gibson?
Here.
President Rocking?
Here.
Commissioner Anzier?
Here.
Commissioner Jax?
Here.
Commissioner Janer?
Yes.
Commissioner Wizall?
Here.
Commissioner Thompson?
Here.
I think I notified that Commissioner Jana would like to participate remotely for business practices. Move to allow remote meeting participation of Commissioner Jana for Section 7 of the Local Meeting Act. President Rocking?
Yes.
Commissioner Jax?
Yes.
Commissioner Anzier?
Yes.
Commissioner Wizall?
Sure.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
President Gibson?
Yeah. Commissioner Janer, can you hear us?
Yeah, thank you.
Great, thanks. Do we have any management public?
We do. First up is Mr. Paul Redzik.
And before we start managing public, I would just like to remind you of these things on the sign-up sheet. Since many of the other matters raised during public comment require further investigation and research, the board may be unable to respond to some of the comments. People take on other senior advisement, talk and have further consideration. We have everybody's contact information to respond. And as a reminder, comments are limited to three minutes.
Good evening, and I appreciate the opportunity to address you. My name is Paul Redzik, who resides at 1444 Terrance Drive in the Whining Creek subdivision. My wife and Jill and I, and our kids have been there, raised our kids for the last 32 years. We have a direct view of Whining Creek Park, the playground, the parking lot, and the proposed basketball court. All of our children use Whining Creek playground, playing fields for soccer and ball field, baseball fields. And now our five grandchildren are doing the same. All of our grandchildren had their first ride on the swing from us at Whining Creek Park. And I have never addressed a governmental body in this neighborhood before. I'm here today to voice my disapproval, our disapproval, of the proposed Whining Creek basketball court. Let me start by saying, we are not anti-basketball people. Our three sons played for the Lincoln Junior High teams, and two played at the high school level. Believe it or not, several decades and about 30 times ago, I was not a bad player myself. Anyway, the objections my wife and I have are based on data collected from three sources. Number one, the district's own master plan. Two, the results of the Freedom of Information Act request I filed with the district. And number three, the results of the petition I circulated in the Whining Creek and Maple Brook two areas, two subdivisions that were to the park. Number one, with regard to the master plan, it was brought to my attention, I've never written a master plan before, and it's a tremendous document. Toodles on that. I've read a few documents in my day. It's a tremendous piece of data gathering and writing. Bringing your attention, I don't suppose, I don't know if you have access to it, but, and I don't suppose you've committed it all to memory, but, the first thing that came to my attention was page 20. This is under the Community Interest and Opinion Survey. This is summary, all the raw data, of course, is somewhere else in the, in the plan. But second to the last paragraph on page 20 talks about, and I'll read it verbatim, "In terms of outdoor recreational needs, the top five facilities with highest interest from residents are: walking, biking trails, open spaces or natural areas, picnic areas and shelters, outdoor splash pads, spray parks, game fields for soccer, lacrosse, or football." No mention of basketball courts. And I might add that two of those issues, two of those features, open spaces and game fields, would be reduced by installation of the basketball court. Number two, fast forward to page 30. This is under district-wide recreation. It's a great breakdown, my humble opinion, of the various features district-wide. And it caught my attention that there's a line item for basketball courts. According to the master plan, there are 29.5 district facilities that have basketball courts. And it's, basically, the current need is 30. So it's 99, the district is 99% of the current need of basketball courts, city district-wide.
Excuse me, Mr. Zicky, it's been three minutes. We really appreciate your comments, but I believe we have, we have other speakers tonight as well. For everybody's sake, we need to keep each speaker for three minutes.
I'm sorry?
For everybody's sake, we need to keep each speaker for three minutes, but we'd be happy to continue our conversation.
I'm going to spend... It's my first time in 32 years, so can I have a couple more minutes? No, I'm sorry. Okay, so, the point is, the district's own master plan says you're 99% of the capacity of what you should have. Fast forward to Plan Area 5, that is where Whining Creek Park is located. The amenities considerations, recommendations, bullet points, talk about, "The demand for amenities did not increase substantially since the last master plan." And it talks about emphasizing maintenance of existing facilities before constructing new ones. And in that regard, I would say, please upgrade the playground, we would like that.
Thanks, excuse me. Thank you, Mr. Zicky, we really, we have other speakers and we need to get over to everybody. But I would like, I believe staff has already discussed setting up some meetings to discuss the concerns. And I appreciate your interest and involvement, and we're absolutely excited.
Well, I have much more data that I'd be glad to share with anybody that is interested.
Thank you, we look forward to the conversations, thank you for coming. Do we have other speakers?
Mr. Ben Evers?
Hi, I am Ben Evers, and I go, I am in eighth grade at Lincoln Junior High School. And today, I'm here to talk about the basketball courts for Whining Creek Park. So some of my points that I've been, like, thinking about is that, so me and my friends usually get bored a lot and want to go play basketball, because we love to play sports and everything. And don't want to, like, sit around all day, just sitting inside, especially when it's, like, perfect weather for it. So, but the, like, the closest courts from us are, like, a 15-minute bike ride away, which, we don't really want to bike that far, but we've done it multiple times. We keep having to do it, we want to keep playing basketball, but can't really play anywhere else, at one court. And that's in Springfield Park. And, uh, most of the courts over there, they only have one court, and it's really overcrowded. So half the time, we just have to go home because we can't play there, or we'll just have to, like, play pickup game with other kids there. But if we had a basketball court at Whining Creek, it'd be good for everybody around, entire area, and we wouldn't have to worry about having to ride that far, or having to, like, I don't know, just having to ride that far. And it wouldn't be very expensive, because after being built, you don't really have to care for them, like, too much afterward, because they're just a basketball court, and it's not like you need to make revisions on them every, like, year or so, like parks or any other thing like that. And if you had a basketball court for Whining Creek, there's a lot of kids in it, and it's, it's a good place to, like, let them play outside, just like, we have a park, we have a baseball field, we have, uh, you know, big open field, and it wouldn't make much of a difference if we had a basketball court too. Because even if some people don't like the noise, they, like, it's a park, and it's going to be noisy, so they can't really, like, walk that, they choose to live by the park, they choose to live there. And if they didn't want to live by any noise, then they shouldn't have lived there, I guess. And then, yeah, said, "Thank you for letting me speak," and thank you.
Thank you for coming, Mr. Gibson, and I hope it's been a help, Mr. Evers.
Love you.
Mr. Chad Evers?
Good evening. Chad Evers, I live at 1461 Longville Court in the Whining Creek subdivision. Here to talk about the basketball courts at, or proposed basketball courts in Whining Creek. I'm a huge supporter of the park district, seriously consider it before with the adding of new courts during the upcoming park approval plan. The Naperville Park District, to me, sets the bar for amenities, you know, in surrounding communities in Chicago Mid-Area. The bar is very high, as you can see by just going around at all of our parks, and what we have available for adults, kids alike. Adding the basketball courts to Whining Creek not only will enhance the current space, but also gives folks in Naperville a place to be active outside. Maybe not today, but most times, you know, we do get nice weather if you want to, if you're here in Chicago Mid. You know, for those opposed, I understand, but I'm confident the residents surrounding the park would not notice a difference on any given day, night, at dusk, where the kids and adults, like me, maybe using the, the park for baseball, softball, soccer, kickball, go down the list, football. Kids are playing tag, whatever you want to call it, they're there, and they're going to be there with or without the courts. Where I grew up, we had, we had one basketball hoop. I grew up downstate, a small town called Greenview, Illinois. You win a prize, you've heard of it. It was a place to be after school. Kids growing up, we went there, we had that, you know, that was an experience that I want my family, or my kids, my kids' friends, to have. This will give members of the community, young and old, a place to go and ask outdoors. Myself, I volunteered with the Naperville Park District to coach my kids' basketball teams over the last few years. When my kids were younger, the interest was not near what I've seen it grow to in the last 10 years. Where it's going to today, the interest has beyond exploded from my vantage point, and clearly there's a demand in this community for more places to play basketball. I don't have a whole lot of statistics, but I'll give you one. And this is hot off the press, I talked to Kathy Schweitzer today, as I was coordinating my kids' teams for the recreational program for the park district. Last year, we had 200, it was either 225 or 250 teams signed up through the park district plateaus in the coming fall, our season. This year, we got 500. I'll leave it at that, the man is there, let's look on.
Thank you for having me, Mr. Evers.
I don't have any more.
Thank you all, very kind of speaking. Next, we will move on to the consent agenda.
3.1, approve August 10, 2023 regular meeting minutes. 3.2, approve the 2023 master plan. And 3.3, accept the base bid and alternate number one bid of Mississippi's Construction Company in the total amount of $152,200 as a most responsive and responsible bid for the Centennial Beach Chemical Pit Restoration Project, and to authorize staff to carry a further 5% contingency for total authorized expenditure for the project in the amount in and out now to exceed $159,810.
Is there any, is your consent agenda considered?
Move to accept consent agenda items 3.1 through 3.3.
Second.
Um, sorry, roll call please.
President Rocking?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Anzier?
Yes.
Commissioner Jax?
Yes.
Commissioner Janer?
Yeah.
Commissioner Wizall?
Yes.
President Gibson?
Yes.
Move to approve consent agenda items 3.1 through 3.3.
Second. Um, all favor? Sorry, real quick, just unfinished business, I should have mentioned this after the public comment. Executive Director Wilson, do you mind just speaking to the Whining Creek plans and our further discussion with the community?
Yes. Uh, so right now, staff is in the process of compiling all of the feedback that we received from the community as part of the capital plan virtual open house that's scheduled to be discussed during the month of August. What we intend to do is all the feedback that we received, and we did receive quite a bit of feedback on the Whining Creek Park basketball court. All of that is going to be compiled, and then will be shared with the board commissioners. As President Gibson mentioned earlier, staff also intends to reach out to those who share concerns about basketball court being introduced to the park, to schedule a time to meet with them and to talk to them and learn more about those concerns. So certainly quite a bit of information that is going to be going to the board, as well as follow-up by staff with residents regarding the project.
The executive director Wilson, thank you all for the panel system. Next up, we have the 2023 Miniature Report, due to 2024 budget.
Yes, so each year, this time of year in August, we like to provide the board with an update of where we're at as a district, as we're about two-thirds of the way through the year. And then begin to talk a bit about the 2024 budget and what we can expect. Um, we are just beginning the process, well, actually, we're still beginning the process of putting together year investments, as well as putting together the 2024 budget. And as you may recall, we worked from the three-year financial plan that was provided to the board and approved early this summer. So this evening, we've got a few items that we want to go through to provide that update and talk a bit about action. So to begin with, as I mentioned, we're about two-thirds of the way through the year. Overall, we are in a positive financial position, but we're still managing some pressures. Those pressures, and we will talk a little more in depth about that, continue to be rising costs with supplies and equipment, some of the supply chain issues that we're continuing to experience, much like most in the world, as well as recruiting and having enough staff to be able to, particularly, we're here tonight. We're in a much better position than what we were in 2022 for labor, but there are still some areas that, uh, that needs to come. We're in a solid position regarding participation numbers and facility utilization. We continue to see growth in a lot of areas of the program, and that was after some major surges in growth last year, but we'll talk more in depth about that. I mentioned that, you know, staffing levels, we certainly made progress, but there are areas such as our custodial, our trades, parts and parts maintenance, beverage areas, customer service, and even areas like our birthday party hosts and babysitting, where we had challenges with getting enough repurposed in those areas to fill all the older positions that we have. So staff continues to be creative in finding ways to be able to provide the programs and to get the work done. But that's an area where we continue to be challenged. Equipment, vehicles, we've talked about that at a number of board meetings, just the difficulties with security net and some rising costs. That is something that we continue to see in the report here, and we have some interesting information that our fleet departments pulled together that we're going to share this evening in the presentation. And then lastly, our volunteer program participation, this is one of the major goals for the park district. Coming out of pandemic, we did not have as many of the larger groups coming out and helping in the parks. And those groups are starting to return now. And one of the goals for us was, as an organization, really engage those groups and have them begin to work on some of the larger projects in the park. And I'm happy to report that this year, we've been able to complete 27 parks projects up until this point, as compared to last year, we were at 18. We have seven Eagle Scout projects thus far, the first is four last year. So we are seeing the volunteers increase in those areas beyond just the youth act by volunteers. So that's a good, very good sign, and certainly helps with park projects as well as our special events. Now I'll turn it over to Director Coates to talk a little bit about facility revenue participation.
Sure, thank you. So as you can see up there, we're actually coming into the end of the year, that we're looking pretty good so far with our facilities. Centennial Beach, we're slightly below budget right now, but we still have five things left in the beach season. So you never know what's going to happen there. Uh, our daily paid admissions is 9%, 9% ahead of last year. Uh, membership sales are on par with budget, so we're sitting in a really good place there. And we filled 2.6 more orders than we did at the grid last year. And just want to let you know, our number one seller is still ice cream. We sold over, close to 15,000 pounds. And our icing that we brought in this year is 30% more, brought in 30% more sales than the shake ice, so that was a good move on our part to change those two out. Uh, our golf course is looking really good also. Uh, the year-to-date rounds exceed expectations. Uh, with Naperville, we're at about 5,100 rounds. Our driving range revenue is up 12% versus 2022. Uh, and that is mainly due to the expansion improvements have helped increase the driving range. Uh, memberships are up 5% versus 2022 at $36,640. And, um, overall revenue are 8% ahead of budget, $184,740. So we're looking really good there. Uh, weather, of course, is certainly helping us, and we hope that that will continue into the remainder of fall. Oh, Ford, I jumped right over Ford Hill, didn't I? Okay, Ford Hill, yes, the Ford Hill, our fitness memberships, and this is one is very impressive. The Ford Hill memberships revenue is up 39% year-to-date, with a total of close to over 6,600 total members. And our fitness membership usage is up 55% versus last year. So we're looking really good. Um, group exercise is probably our most popular with the memberships, but, uh, you know, is, is really the driving wheel as well. It's a really popular program, so. All right, here we go with the, um, overall, recreation is doing very well. Um, as you can see, summer day camp, wow, kind of surprised us this year. Uh, we have over 2,500-plus campers this year, 22% increase over last year. Uh, we believe probably reasonably prices a big one. Um, we also run a very quality program, it's just not making them sit in, they're active in field trips and things like that. So that contributes to the popularity. Our athletics, um, fall soccer premiere, looking back, we've kind of looked at a range from about 2016. These are the highest numbers we've seen since before 2016. So we're really seeing huge participation, we're still getting people who are registered, so. Um, and then basketball, we expect an additional 240 players, if not more, than what we've been proactive with and preparing for for this year. Um, our virtual programs, as you can see, we're significantly declining, which is a good thing. Um, we're down about 308 versus 650. Now, this does not include our virtual programming for the fitness center. Um, the fitness center, we still have a very popular program. We have 31 hybrid classes, where you can go to the class and do it virtually, so that's been very popular um, out of the total 56 total classes, so that's been good for the month of July. Our adult and senior programming, um, the coed senior softball league, we have 86 participants, which is 5% more. So we're starting to see that, that senior, that older group starting to return. Uh, our adult trips and outings, 41% participation versus last year. So we're really starting to see that group starting to return. Um, aquatics, a little bit different here on the aquatics end. Um, we have a slight decline in participation, however, we're seeing that the private lessons are decreasing. So they're kind of balancing themselves out, people are looking for something a little bit different, I think. So, uh, we have that, that's, we're, we're had this year. Um, overall, we're, while growth continues to, um, continues across several areas, we are starting to see things that are starting to be a little bit more consistent participation. Uh, we don't have these big flows, which is really nice, because it helps with the planning purposes, but we are starting to see us off now a little bit more, getting more consistent.
Hey, after all of that good news, I get to share some more of our challenges for 2023. I'm going to echo what Brad had talked about earlier, supply chain issues. In the next slide, we're going to actually give you some examples of that. We're still seeing deliveries, equipment delays, having to defer things in the future years because it's just not coming in. And recent news is indicating it could only get worse with what's going on with the pandemic now, as far as, um, the ability to bring materials into our country. Uh, the second point, compression. Now, we've been talking for many years, actually, when minimum wage first came up and we knew we were going to address that. That minimum wage, yes, that is going to hurt us. And as we moved through that five-year implementation, we knew compression was going to be even a larger impact than minimum wage. Um, and, and we're experiencing that now. Uh, for both our full and part-time positions, compression is infecting us. Um, and how are we addressing it? As we always talk about, we're, we're remaining competitive with regard to wages and benefits, and making sure that we're not going to lose people because of compression. And we want to keep our current staff that we have, that have all the knowledge and experience with us. We've talked about this before too. Um, demand for our programs in some areas are just continuing to grow. Um, you're going to hear again, our soccer program, day camps, and basketball has been through the roof. Um, as you heard earlier on in the year, we were able to, the red staff did a really great job, making sure, especially for basketball, that for the practice facilities, that we worked with more indoor practice to address that, and we anticipate that as Andrew has said, we're planning for that additional up all the surveying and over last year's huge increase in numbers for that program. Um, something new, we maybe haven't talked to you about that much, is the demand um, that we're facing for community, um, community events and special events. We talk about this a lot at staff level, because you would think rentals and community events, it should, you know, you have a system, you input a event system, and you're done. But it involves, um, three or four departments when we have special events. Uh, we have our red staff that's involved, park staff is involved, police are involved, and there's also administrative tasks that makes one event very time consuming. So it's really positive that we have such a great, we have great facilities and great outdoor spaces if people want to come here. From a staffing perspective, we are, um, struggling, having to balance a lot in order to, um, you know, effectively manage those special events. You might be hearing some more of that stuff as more information on it as we go into the 2024 budget. And then lastly, which we're going to get into, our inflationary pressures. Um, they continue, we all are still feeling it at home, we are also feeling it here. And I'm going to go through a couple examples, first, for some of our vehicles that we've talked about, and then also just give you a couple verbal highlights on some things in our operating budget. So this is what Brad had referred to about what our fleet department put together. It's always good to see things on paper, I mean, we know things have increased. So if you look at the top two items, those are two of our mowers. Um, first one, we purchased, the last time was in 2018, actually, for both of them. The last purchase price we have listed there, about $78,000, and then $20,000 for the second. Um, current pricing, same equipment, $116,000 versus 78, $44,000 versus 20. So you look at those dollar increases, look at the percent increases. So we're talking, uh, since 2018, a 49% or 120%. To put it in perspective, when you annualize those numbers, we're talking a 10% increase every year since 18, and a 24% increase. So our challenge is, with those large increases, our, our system grows, we have parks. Um, we're trying to get fully staffed with people that need equipment and they need vehicles, and we're having to pay for the same thing. So at some point, um, we need everything that we have to support getting vehicles like this. And we're trying to keep our system whole. Let's go down to vehicles. Um, so our Ford, very common, 150, 250, and Rangers, 2019 were the last purchase for the top two, and then the Ranger was 2021. You could see the large increases also on vehicles. We're talking 79% since 2019, 87, and then 28% um, since 2021. We'll annualize those, and we're talking huge increases. Um, and again, as we always talk about, we have two main revenue sources here at the district, and it's property tax and its fees. So when we are seeing these increases and we're balancing that mix, property taxes, and what we can, um, can raise through there is really important to keep our ongoing fleet investment up and running. Lastly, repair parts here, it's just a trend. Uh, there's a combination of the increase, but you can see from '21, what we spent, $113,000, $22,000, $142,000, and in 2023, we're, um, right now, we spent, this is just through July, and after a whole 12 months, we've spent close to over $100,000, which is a pretty big increase. Um, it's a combination, it's a combination of everything that we are doing costs more, but we also know we're extending the life of a lot of our assets, and it just is costing more to maintain those. Um, so we had, um, golf and our parks department just give us some information that we don't have in here on some things that impact the operating budget. So things say ball field is something we use pretty consistently year to year. Um, in 2020, and we looked at 20 because quantities were the same than we ordered. Uh, we were paying about $122 a ton, now we're paying $148. 21% increase just for ball field next. Grass seed, something we use every year, we're looking at a 36% increase from 2019. two thousand and nineteen. So, we're seeing on a commodity level also these large increases of over twenty percent for regular items that we buy every day. Okay, on to Staff Recruitment. So, good news and also challenging news here, as we've talked about earlier. You know, we have, as you know, not only staff, you've spent a lot of time, Perion's talked about this, but the challenges we have with recruitment and retention. And while we, we have to keep this at the forefront, and we talk about it as a group, we can't not continue focusing on this, even though things have improved, because we could slip back to where we were a couple of years ago if we're not diligent. And we do appreciate, I'll say, we appreciate the Board's support of encouragement to try different things, you know? Katie and her team have come up with creative things that we've supported and continue to support that have worked, and so we can try things, things that don't work, we won't focus on, and the things that do work, we're going to continue doing. So, some of the things, I'll just highlight for Community Outreach, you can read all of the bullets up there, but a couple of things that are, one of them new is Your Brand Matters Event, and also, I think the last bullet really focuses so much on everything that's building relationships within the community to get the word out about what a great place this is to work. We continue spending staff time and dollars into advertising and promotion, and you can read all the things that we've done, and we're going to continue to work under, under that, I'll say, that pillar. And our incentives continue. This program, for a small dollar amount, I don't recall offhand where we are, but we hired a lot of people, Katie reported and asked through that program. Internally, again, as we talk about retention, our culture here is so important, and as we're looking for new people, it's not just saying we can go out and hire someone, here we have high expectations, as you all know, so we want to find the people that have the right skills and the right fit, and very importantly, fit in with our culture here. Internally, we're doing a complete job description review, and as we'll talk about, as we go into twenty-four, you'll hear more that we're doing compensation, study, and analysis. That's pretty big. And then, just to keep things fun and culture, we've expanded Spiritas Month Activities, which are really popular with everyone. Succession planning, and also finding out what our park and seasonal folks here think about their positions in the district are all really important. And I just, I guess I'll finish up with, I think, how unique it is, and I think we're all really proud of, well, we're all proud of here, but the collaboration between HR and Marketing to come up with this program, I think all of us that aren't doing that are really proud of Katie and Sam and their teams, because, again, they're picked up for a national conference, they're picked up for the state conference, and I will bet many people here that they're going to want more information about the programs that we have there because they're pretty innovative. Okay, moving on to where we are in two thousand and twenty-three with capital. So, overall, about this time when we work on our budget projections for twenty-three, all the departments that are involved in capital get together and project what they were going to be at the end of the year. So, overall, that eleven-point-nine million is what we think we're going to spend, that will change depending on if Vehicles come in, if we can get equipment in, but we are under budget, we budgeted twelve-point-eight million for capital, and some of that is, again, deferring some things we'll talk about, and others are, some projects actually did come in under, and that could be from general school and other things. Ribbon cutting events that we've had, you can see, we've got the three playgrounds, and then the big one, the renovation at Springbrook reopened in June, and we also have several more playground openings scheduled for two thousand and twenty-three. One of the large projects that we have to defer, as this is one example, is the Pavilion, the Franchise Rust Pavilion, and that was installation of equipment that just is not here, and we don't expect it, so we deferred that piece of the project into two thousand and twenty-four.
So, as we look ahead to two thousand and twenty-four, what are going to be some of the major initiatives and areas that you'll see within the budget, as well as beginning to develop some of the major goals for next year? First one being, and this is right off our strategic plan as well as the master plan, is the completion of the indoor space needs assessment. We've already started the roof maintenance assessment, we've got a work going into it, staff is pulling a lot of data, looking at our current facility utilization, and we are scheduled to complete that next year, really set that future direction of where the district's going to go in regards to indoor space. One of the things that we will be recommending to the Board for two thousand and twenty-four is that we bring in some outside help, that we get a consultant to come in to assist with really looking at and analyzing the data that we have, being able to help the staff develop recommendations where we go as a district, as well as to assist with gathering more feedback from the community, so that's something that we'll have some further discussions with the Board on this fall, as we're putting together the budget and planning for that initiative. Implementing our new Human Resource Payroll Platform, really, this is about improving efficiencies. The payroll and the Human Resource, the online platform is one of the backbone-type of softwares that we utilize beyond our registration software. We're working with so many employees throughout the course of the year, having a system that talks nicely with different aspects of the system, is able to track training and do a lot of things that we're, right now, having to do in separate software platforms, will be a huge improvement in efficiency next year, so that's something that Katie and her team are going to, are going to do. Initiating a compensation study analysis, really for full-time staff. This year, we focused on our time wages and made adjustments where that was needed. Next year, we'll be looking more at our full-time positions and overall compensation. We have two facilities next year that will be celebrating anniversaries, that being the Knackville Nature Center, will be ten years next year, as well as Springbrook Golf Force, which will celebrate its fiftieth anniversary, so having some events and some celebration around that. In addition to the grand opening of the Frank Rust Pavilion at Knackville Park when that equipment arrives, and we're able to get that constructed. This year, a big part of park maintenance has really been looking at different ways to leverage that innovation, different ways to complete maintenance within the parks. We started with utilizing some of the autonomous mowers, which has been going well, and we made opportunities to expand there. But also going back to the slide that Sue had with the equipment, and just the rising cost of equipment, looking at other different ways for us or different types of equipment that we can utilize within our parks to be able to still accomplish the job that needs to be done, but maybe in a more cost-effective way based on some of the prices that we're seeing. Continuing to invest in and tracking and retaining staff, something that Sue talked about, that's something that, again, as an organization, we cannot take or put off the gas without. We have to continue really looking at ways to bring in more staff as well as retain those staff once they're here. We've been doing a great job of that as an organization, but that's something that we need to continue to do. Working with community and regional partners, literally careers broke here, a campaign that we have begun, that initiative, working with some of the universities in the area, other partner agencies, and working to grow and bringing in more of those staff to fill those open positions that we have, is something that will be a major focus. Executing the overall goals and objectives that we have in two major documents, with the strategic plan that was recently updated, as well as the issue of the master plan, will certainly be top of mind. And then with Naperville, within our golf operations, it's completing the Lurie type of practice facility, that is with the, the work that we're doing with the eighteen coal this year will allow us to be able to complete that facility next year, and then beginning some of the course improvements that are within the Golf Master Plan for Naperville. And what we recently did, Kevin and his team recently did a survey of golfers to gather feedback from them on the improvements that are planned for Naperville. Here are some of the types of improvements to Springbrook. And with the responses, we asked about timing and when that should be completed, and it was about fifty-fifty as far as whether or not we should move forward next year or wait a little bit longer for that. As part of that project, we're also looking at critical infrastructure, so the irrigation system is over thirty years old at Naperville. Typically, the irrigation system is about a twenty-to-twenty-five-year life span, so we well exceed what typically life span is. That's something that we need to move forward with at Naperville for next year, and that we've been recommending. We will be able to do that project without needing to close the course, we'll be able to continue the operations through the year, and what we will look to do is then hold on some of the other improvements for the course. We will do some T-modifications in areas where we need to enlarge the Ts and recommend and reform the irrigation, but that will not be forward at this time with the other improvements of course, which, again, would be in that Naperville, we may be holding a course all through the next year. A number of areas for us to focus on as we begin to put together the two thousand and twenty-four budget. Again, I wanted to justify this review of where we're at in two thousand and twenty-three, and talk a little about next year. Any questions you have?
Thank you. Mr. Daniel, do you have any questions? This was really kind of, so thank you all. I, will you be sending that to, the deck to us?
Yes, yes, so we'll send the presentation to the entire Board, and certainly if there are questions that come out, I'll have to, like, so.
Well, thank you for the work, kind of like that. So, on to new business. First up, we have Kids Matter Agreement.
Yes, so included with the packet was a grant agreement with Kids Matter. Staff has been working with Kids Matter to develop a new agreement. The previous agreement was approved in two thousand and nineteen, and to formalize the partnership between the Park District and Kids Matter for program collaboration and then use of dedicated offices at the administration level. The term of the original agreement extended through December of two thousand and twenty, however, since that time, the Park District and Kids Matter continue to partner on that community programming as well as the office space at the administration level. Earlier this year, we identified a need to update that agreement, as well as the district, just with the growth that we're seeing, we need to have access to that office space, so we let Kids Matter now and reiterate them that this year, they need to relocate to another office outside of the district, which they've been working to do, and that is actually in the process of agreeing right now. But we wanted to continue that partnership with the collaboration on community programs. We collaborated with Kids Matter on the community job fair that's held in January, the kite festival that's held at Franchise Sports Complex, the volunteer fair that's coming up this fall, as well as there are other meetings and programs that Kids Matter will hold within our park facilities that we feel that is important to continue to support. So, what we've, what we're proposing with this updated agreement is to continue that collaborative programming with Kids Matter, however, renewing the office space portion of the agreement, and then we've incorporated a number of terms within the agreement that are typical of what we have for independent contractors that do programs for the district. So, we wanted to present a draft for discussion with the Board, and there's a consensus before we bring it back to the September fourteenth meeting for approval.
Are there any questions or comments? That's good. That's all. Next up, we have Memorial Wall Display Resolution.
Okay, so also included within the packet was a draft resolution for Vietnam Memorial Wall Display and Veterans Day Ceremony that would occur near the Grand Pavilion on the Riverwalk. Staff recently met representatives from the DFW, Naperville Responder Veterans, and other members of the community to discuss plans to bring back a replica of Vietnam Memorial Wall. The last time a replica was displayed was actually in two thousand and fifteen as part of the Healy Field Honor that took place at Lurie Hill. So, two thousand and twenty-three marks the fiftieth anniversary of when the last U.S. Combat Troops left South Vietnam in nineteen-seventy-three. And so, to commemorate that anniversary, a replica of the wall will be constructed near the Grand Pavilion, honored for walk public display from Thursday, November ninth, through Tuesday, November fourteenth. In addition, the annual Veterans Day Ceremony, which typically occurs at Veterans Park, will take place near the wall and the Grand Pavilion on Saturday, November eleventh at eleven a.m. All of the materials that are needed to construct the wall, as well as the wall panels themselves, are being funded through donations. The wall is approximately two-hundred-and-thirty-three feet in length, so pretty large, and it includes the names of over fifty-eight thousand service members who gave their lives between eighteen-fifty-seven and nineteen-seventy-five. Park District staff will assist the DFW and Naperville Responder Veterans with the wall construction, and the Park District will be waiting for the fees associated with use of the space. We would also assist with promoting the display and Veterans Day Ceremony to the community. The proposed resolution authorizes the displaying of a replica, since it is on Park District property as an act of government speech, so it directs us to assist with directing the display and assisting with conducting the ceremony, utilizing the aid of volunteers and local businesses. Further identified that the display and ceremony are a Park District program, so it doesn't constitute a change with the status of the Riverwalk as a forum for speech. We have certain areas on the Riverwalk that are designated as public forums, and this area in particular is outside of the Grand Pavilion, so that's why we want to adopt this resolution to the Board to adopt this for here.
Questions? Twenty-four fireworks display?
All right, last one's me, and then I'll turn it over to someone else. So, it is time actually to enter into a contract for the two thousand and twenty-four July Fireworks Display. This is a program that we partner on with the City of Naperville, and we're also very successful in doing and getting some sponsors for the July Fireworks in two thousand and twenty-three. MAD Armor is the name of the company, fire tech company that we've used the last two years. We've had quite a bit of success with working with MAD Armor, and done a very nice job with the display. They have committed to the same type of show or same quantity of fireworks on July fourth for the same price in two thousand and twenty. So, at the September fourteenth meeting, we would look to recommend a contract to the Board for approval, and again, this is something that we've partnered with in regards to cost with the city, and we look to seek out sponsors for that as well.
Any questions? Next up, we have Naperville Parking Lot Exchange.
Yes, good evening. So, this item was included in the August eighteenth weekly packet. Staff recently discussed input received from residents and park patrons with respect to parking lot adjacent to the central maintenance facility in the northern map of Napark, being pulled due to its extensive usage. This parking lot serves numerous recreational activities and activities, including the nearby ball fields, synthetic turf field, and pickleball courts, not only during normal business hours, but in evening hours and over the weekends. Additionally, this parking lot is used by staff and visitors to the central maintenance facility, and it, as identified at the August tenth Parks and Rec Committee meeting, the capacity of this parking lot, existing parking lot, is forty-six parking stalls. Considering the high demand and usage of this parking lot, especially during the busy spring, summer, fall, and regular program season at Napark, staff explores several options to expand parking in this area. The preferred option for a new parking lot would be situated between the Naperville Central High School bar sea softball field and the central maintenance facility. This location and layout can provide up to thirty-six new parking stalls with a circular drive and the use of existing drop-off area on-site. The total cost for this new parking lot is estimated at four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. Perfill payment is recommended for this parking lot as a best management practice without the need to provide store mortgage attention on-site, as well as not to impact existing program and spaces that we have at Napark. Staff intends to pursue grants for this project in addition to the Ronori Community Guard plots that supports this park. Perfill payment parking lot improvements planned for next year. If there is an interest to proceed with this project, it's recommended to allocate funds within the two thousand and twenty-four capital budget and construct this parking lot development at Napark in order to alleviate the high demand for vehicular parking at Napark. Is there any questions?
I do have one, like, for other alternatives, is a parking lot behind the building, maybe cemetery grounds, is that considered? Someone could be seeing that or running this town out?
Yeah, yeah, good point. Director Wilson has some input on that.
Yes, I actually reached out to Naperville Cemetery Board, one of the members, to inquire about that, and assigned the Cemetery Board not having any interest in.
And it's time that the Cemetery Board, you know, have any interest in leasing out that portion of space for someone's. They have their own needs, that's it.
It's like, I do question how full that, that lot currently is. That's a pretty large price tag for three sets of spots.
Absolutely. So we did quite a bit of analysis with staff, working out of that central maintenance facility during the day, evening hours. When we're there at various events during the day, we make, we see full or almost being full. Where you look at not only the pickleball courts, the synthetic turf fields, but all the other programmable spaces and activities within the central maintenance facility. And there's times where we're looking at the 46 stalls even with the 80 parking. So based on that analysis, we're recommending additional 36 spaces. And also, as we've seen on the weekend, for play and for various activities and athletic events, it is full.
Yeah, I would echo that in that evening and weekends, typically when we have athletic activities taking place, that parking lot fills very quickly. A lot of cars are coming in and searching for parking spots. Not Park, at the time, the parking lot was built as part of the central maintenance facility project. And that was prior to the new bar and softball field that Naperville Central High School utilizes. The synthetic turf field being developed as well as the pickleball courts at Not Park. So when those north Not Park amenities went, were constructed, additional parking was not constructed as part of that. The thought was that if other parking around the park area would be able to accommodate the overall demands at the park. What we're seeing is just the high level of use and interest in those amenities at the park is leading to a situation where there's just a lot of people looking for parking in that particular area. So this would help to alleviate that.
What is the conversation then with the district, the District 203, for us basically building a parking lot for their softball field?
Well, this, this serves, would serve the entire park. It's something that we can certainly have a conversation with District 203 to see if there's an interest in any type of cost share. And we'd be happy to do that. But that's not a conversation that we've had up to this point.
And right now, I know the parking lot by the maintenance facility is full. What's in the overflow parking is on that street just south of that school.
Right. There is street parking that's available on our avenue, and we often see that the street parking also is.
Right. And then the one north of it, correct? Like, you have to go past the tennis courts to get to the pickleball courts?
Yes, so there's street parking on Hillside, as well as the parking that's in Naperville Central High School. We also have parking to the west at the garden plots, as well as Sports and Park, that is also being looked at as far as making improvements to permeable factors at those locations. Again, seeking grant opportunities to assist with some of those costs. And then the last parking area that we have is in Not Park South, which really serves the southern area of Not Park. And, yes, correct.
But this would be much more accessible for people, especially, you know, when they keep pickleballs and they might eat over there.
Yes.
For people of all different abilities and mobility.
This would be much more accessible for, for anyone utilizing the park amenities in New York and Not Park. Absolutely.
Yeah, just, yeah, we have the plan. The only entrance to the new lot would be off of our avenue, right?
Correct, okay.
Yep.
Commissioner Janney, do you have any questions on this item?
No, good thinking.
Right. So I'm sorry, just in terms of, first we want to know a consensus so you can plan for the budget, or what can you from us?
Yes, that's, that's helpful. Yeah, exactly. As far as building it into the budget as a cap of project.
You know, either for consensus this evening, or some time to, you know, questions, or, I mean, so that's fine.
If there's some consensus this evening, that's fine. Otherwise, if you'd like to take some time and ask questions, happy hour.
I do like Commissioner Rizwell's comment. I'm just checking for cautionary. Do we have any sense, you mentioned possible grants, do you have any sense of how much that would alleviate the burden?
We, we started looking into it. There's a green infrastructure grant through the National Civil LPA. The only thing is, it's for existing amenities, so we're pursuing that for the Ron Oring Community Guard plots that support this park from the paper parking lot area that we have also planned for next year. We also know that DuPage Founding is looking at releasing some grants related to stormwater improvements. And this is perp papers starting in September. So we're looking at other grants for this project. We don't know, we don't have a set dollar now about how much we can get. We're going to try to get as much as possible.
And this price is aligned with what these parking lots typically, is this capital size, what the other capitals, major center, be small?
This is a little bit smaller. I want to add those major centers, about 100 parking stalls. We actually, we're working with the civil engineer for the Ron Oring Community Guard plots project, and we asked the same civil engineer to run the estimates for this. So we feel very confident in the numbers. If we're out of bid next, like early next year for construction in 2024, that's not what we're going to have. And that's fair result based on the market. The key, what we're trying to achieve is that the alternative revenue, the grants, that are available for something like this, because it is improving as far as water quality and environmental initiative.
I feel more comfortable if we exhausted the two, you know, just checking in on 203 and maybe having a better understanding of what amount of grants we might easily expect.
Yeah, I'd like to see, I'd like to see some, some of the district, particularly 12-5, first spot. 12-5, I don't know if it's a parking spot, 20-8, by softball games, and perhaps some of the season's wide. I think the district should be, should be working on the school, the school board, for the school budget bracket.
Yeah, I have a new job to school, Mr. 203. I'll be in my pocket for a minute, I'm sorry.
All right, thank you very much.
Magnificent. Street Center.
Okay, our lease agreement for the 95th Street Center is set to expire on December 31st. Based on our current usage, we would like for to consider renewing the lease for another year with the possibility of two additional one-year extensions. Currently, we are serving close to 3,000 participants in a variety of classes. Classes include dance, fitness, yoga, early childhood, summer camps, and after-school science, just to name a few. These classes also serve a variety of ages as well. The 95th Street site is one of our only indoor facilities located on the southern end of town, and we continue to see growth in our programming of this facility. This lease extension would also allow us time to continue to service area of the community while conducting the district's overall indoor facility needs assessment. I had been in contact with the property owner, and he would be willing to extend our lease with one modification. The use of music during the daytime hours in the dance room would need to be limited. The reason for the modification is the disruption the music is causing to the other business tenants within the facility who butt up against this classroom. The impact of this modification would be minimal, but would require us to adjust some of our fitness offerings to more yoga and meditation versus high-impact fitness. We are also looking into the possibility of classes that utilize headsets to manage noise levels. Currently, the lease fee is $116,000 annually. The property owner is proposing a 10% increase to our lease due to utility rate increases and interest rate increases. The increase would equate to a $2 per square foot increase for an annual total of $127,600. Our plan is to bring this to the board for approval at our next board meeting. Any questions?
So I think we might have to change some of the programming to adjust for this noise, is that, and?
Just during the daytime.
Right, the same time. How much does that affect, we already have on during the day, how many would happen?
Yeah, in that classroom, we do a little bit of the preschool dance. We believe that we can control the noise level with that. The big one that's hidden us is the big fitness classes where they're, "Yeah, yeah!", you know, a lot, a lot of noise. And with that class, we are, that particular class, we are looking into the headsets. Because the people who are participating, they have them on, there's no noise. So all they hear is the teacher talking, you know, kind of thing. So we're looking at that, but if not, we certainly can use a room for yoga, meditation, where the music is very low, very quiet. Unfortunately, we've tried different things in that room to see if we could minimize the noise. And we just have one particular office area that butts right up against this classroom. So that would be the one modification that we really, you said, if I'm going to redo it, you're going to have to, you know, change that, some of the usage of that room during the daytime, which I think we can do, so.
I have a question. Have we considered longer-term leases that would save some money, and I have been asserting the end of the year?
We have, over the time, considered longer-term leases. We've taken more space, we've given space back. We just always approached it with three years because we've also had the board commissioners ask us to look at building spaces down in the south end of Not. So other than going to a longer-term lease when we're in the middle of finding a term of, when we're doing the south end in terms of building, that's why we've, that's why we've gotten extensions without many increases. Kept the pricing the same, we've been through three or four dollars. So this is one for us to kept us nimble in terms of what it is you want and what you did.
I'm also assuming that the staff has shopped around a little bit, so to speak, to make sure that there's not any other spaces we could be looking at where we continue our current programming in that area. Because definitely no need of building in this, in Naperville desperately. So not saying get rid of this by any means, but I'm wondering, maybe there's something nearby that might better suit our needs.
Right. I, I don't know that we've gone to huge extents, but I will point this, we've put money into this facility, you know, the dance floor, that, we all put, so to go look for another dance floor and invest in a shorter term, I think there's some concerns with that of moving. You know, I, I don't know.
Yeah, that, so Andrew is a good point. We have invested quite a bit of capital into these rooms, and knowing that we are working through the indoor space needs assessment, and we'll have some further direction here coming into next year to, to go and find a new space at this point, and then have to put more capital into that space, which could be a shorter term lease. If it's not something we're going to do at this point.
Just as a reminder, this used to be 204 space, 204 is left. So we repurposed it in a way to take advantage of that departure by 204, one time in the colonial event. There have been fluctuations between us and Compass Church. They use space in the weekends, we weren't using, it was a training cost for us in that way. Then they just needed the space, and we did, so we got rid of the colonial space. So it's been an ongoing relationship that's evolved over time, including not only the investments, which we've looked at the same for a vision about church. We're not doing any investment that's going to be used 10 years to pay off, and so two years. So that's how we've been, this lot here is zoned for this. Lifetime, had to go through the whole process, getting it moved into the storefront stuff. And that's a lot more expensive than storefront, you know, that's around the home and across probably down by the company doors and so forth. About 50 years. So part of what's been, in the analysis has also been whether or not we're going to cooperate or do anything in partnership with the One UCA, that's a meta-tie at the moment. So all of that's all been a part of the history of the 95th Street.
And the lease can be, is a 10% increase based on what?
What he shared with me is that the utility costs have gone way up, and then the interest rate increases.
Their interest rating increases?
Yes.
So they made a bad deal, we 10%?
This is what he shared with me.
Can they share us your over years and actually see those? I mean, I'm not, I'm not super comfortable taking word for it.
Yeah, actually, I'm sure.
Well, I know, we don't, we don't have a, right, I mean, it's going to set, the landlord's going to set the rates. And our negotiating position isn't correct. We, and we've had a very good relationship with this particular landlord. There were a number of years where we did not experience any type of increases for the common area maintenance costs. The cost for spurt footage went up incrementally each year. But overall, it's been a reasonable rate. I don't know exactly what this brings us to. We can certainly share that, but it is a reasonable rate, and again, there have been a number of years where the common area maintenance.
For two different zones, you can, you get actual, yeah, yes.
I do know that from what I understand, we are already now gaining less than most of the tenants of the building. So I do have that option.
So the last one, the background.
My only concern is, you know, some of those, like, kid alley and dance classes in there, but your common maintenance, the relationship we have with the landlord, that we keep values low.
And, and keep in mind, this is the one classroom. We still have the other classrooms that we run the preschool in, no problem. Because it doesn't, it's in the quarter by itself, it's not right up against an office space. So I think it's just a matter of scheduling appropriately and picking the right classroom and classroom.
Is that, I know it's an important test we offer down in the south end.
Yep.
Great. From us tonight, this is just a reverend.
Yes, just a discussion, and I will go over it back to the board at the next board meeting.
All right.
Thanks.
Next up, we have Naperville Clubhouse Irrigation Recharge Wellness.
Thank you, Lloyd. A contract for the Springburg Golf Course Maintenance Building Exterior Improvements Project is expected to be included on the consent agenda for the board's consideration at the September 14th meeting of the board commissioners. A memo describing this project was included on your August 18th board meeting packet. Staff is contracting to replace the roof gutters and siding on the Springburg Golf Course Maintenance Building. This building was built in the late 80s, has a asphalt shingle roof and cedar siding. Roof inspections have shown significant wear and shingle damage along with some minor roof leaks. That signal that shingles are likely past the end of their lifespan. The siding on the building is the original cedar siding, and in many areas it was cracking, falling off, and in need of replacement. This project was scheduled for 2024 on the golf capital improvement plan, but due to the current conditions on the roof and siding and the availability of funding in 2023, due to deferred projects and the supply chain delays for some of our equipment purchases, staff is requesting this project be considered for the fall. Project would include flashing felt and 40-year architectural shingles for the roof. All gutters would be replaced, and the cedar siding would be removed and a moisture barrier replaced and covered with new maintenance-free vinyl siding. Staff is recommending entering into a contract with Anthony Roofing, Techta America for this work at a total cost of $181,420.44. The contract would use the terms and pricing of the Omni Partners NCPA contract, a government cooperative purchasing program. And this has been used by the Park District in the past for roofing projects with excellent results. This project was originally budgeted for $250,000, and were if approved, would be scheduled for this fall. Any questions?
So that is Springburg Golf. Do you already, irrigation recharge well?
Excuse me? Irrigation was the first one?
Isn't it?
Oh, I get back?
You don't need more.
No.
You have sessions on Springburg.
So we're going to back up. Sorry about that. So bids for the Naperville Golf Course Irrigation Recharge Wellness Service Project are scheduled to be open on August 31st, and a contract is expected to be included in the consent agenda for the board's consideration at the September 14th meeting of the board commissioners. A memo describing this project was included in your August 18th board repeat packet. This well is a critical part of our maintenance of our golf course. It recharges the pond that provides nearly all the year irrigation water for Naperville. The 1,400-foot well was originally installed in 1989, and was removed and serviced in 2001, and again in 2012. Industry recommendations are these wells, that they should be serviced for 10 to 15 years depending on use. And while currently the well is operating within specs, the extreme use this well experienced during the drought earlier this year, and the unexpected failure of the Naperville Clubhouse well due to column pipe corrosion this past winter, staff is recommending this project be completed this fall to be ready for the 2024 season. The scope of the work includes removal of the pump, the 200-horsepower electric motor, and all column pipe from the well for inspection, and servicing of the pump and motor. And we'd also do a televised inspection of the well, and servicing and replacement of column pipe and other components as needed. The project would be funded using available 2023 golf capital funds available due to deferred projects and equipment purchases. The project, upon approval, would commence after the irrigation season sometime in late October, and the goal would be completion by the end of the year.
I'm just, I'm just curious, I've heard about it before, I don't know, we haven't opened bids yet, but what's the setup?
$150,000 was the original budget. Sorry about that.
So the next regular meeting of the Park District Commissioners will be September 14, 2023, 7:00 PM here at Fort Villanueva Center.
Moved to adjourn the August 24th, 2023 regular meeting.
All favors?